This conference will now be recorded.
And is considered adoption of Resolution 2023, a resolution authorizing issuance and delivery of five million seventy-five thousand principal amount of general obligation temporary notes, series twenty twenty-three, and I believe that we'll hear a little bit of a presentation on that this evening.
Correct, yes. If you're ready.
Ready as ever.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. First up will be Clayton Kelly, financial advisor from Piper Sattler, and he will give you some of the detail about the bond rating and how this process went, and then we'll move to Tyler Ellsworth, who will talk to you about the resolution for adoption. Clayton.
Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. So maybe just kind of going back a little bit for some background on this. Earlier this month is when you adopted the sale resolution that essentially allowed us to move forward with financing. Just kind of as a reminder, these are for the ninety-eight street projects, Kansas Avenue and Richland Avenue projects. And just remember that from a timing standpoint on these, phase one, in the amount of one point five million for the ninety-eight street, has a KOP match requirement, which the city is expected to maintain it, to receive that match no later than November sixteenth. So that kind of date revolves around having the timing for this and the sale, as well as closing on November fourteenth, so that the city has funds in time to receive the match for that project. So today, we went out with the sale to secure the interest rates. Part of the process for that was to receive an updated rating for the city. As a result of that rating and that discussion, the rating agency was made aware of the special obligation bond outstanding for the city that are currently in default. And although they don't have an actual tax backing obligation, so a pledge of property taxes for those specific bonds, the rating agency took the stance essentially that they feel that there's different criteria that they use to come up with a final rating of the city. And management, one of those sections, as well as cash reserves, both of those throughout part of the rating process was deemed a little bit as a result of the default, they just kind of view the project, the decision to move forward with the project, and then essentially ultimately to follow that project is going to impact the outstanding credit rating of the city. As a result, that city had SP one plus operating on their short-term obligations. So there's, we're doing a temporary note financing for this, a little bit different than permanent bond financing. There's a different rating associated with that compared to long-term debt financing. So that the rating agency came back with a SP one versus an SP one plus, so it's a one-notch downgrade for the short-term financing. And then for the longer-term outlook, so your current outstanding, these are for your general obligation bond issues, a two-notch downgrade from double A minus to eight. And so just kind of giving you an idea of the impact of that, typically what we see is about point two to point two-five percent interest rate impact per credit notch. So again, we're not moving forward with the long-term permanent financing on this today, so we can't secure rates for that. So but I would say based on a two-notch downgrade, you're probably looking at anywhere from a quarter of a percent to a half percent increase in your borrowing costs as a result. In that report, they talk about just kind of for the future, some things that you could do to potentially improve that credit rating in the future. Cash balances was one of them. I mean, they referenced just a formal policy of cash balances and not needing that cash balance as a result at the end of last year. If that improves over the next couple of years, they can see an improvement in that credit rating. But overall, big picture, an A rating is still a solid rating for the city, the state of Kansas. I would say that's probably an average rating, look at just from generic broad perspective of credit rating for the city. So very niche circumstance with the default. But from an overall impact in borrowing cost, you know, today's actually a good example of kind of what that impact looks like. So moving forward to this temporary note financing for these projects, we secured short-term interest rates. As a result, today at eleven o'clock, at eleven o'clock, we received two bids on that, and I believe they're in front of you today. Robert Baird in Northland Securities. You'll notice when you look at both those rates that we have received on the temporary note financing, they are almost right in line with each other, four point nine six seven percent of interest cost for this temporary note financing. And so when you start thinking about, okay, what is that impact of that potential downgrade? This is actually pretty close to alignment of what we were expecting to receive before knowing about that downgrade in the city's credit rating. With those, both those bids being so close, very competitive result, that we can do in our opinion, I mean, both these separate firms kind of came to a consensus of a very similar interest rate.
Were you surprised that we only had the two, the two offers on this? Is that normal?
In this environment and what we're experiencing right now from an interest rate perspective, I'm not surprised. Just kind of given it's more broader market environments, kind of getting closer to year end with a shorter-term financing, what the federal funds have done with their interest rates in the past few several months, just those increases, there's just some, they're backing off from wanting to lock into a borrowing rate at this point right now, or a levered rate at this point right now. I will say that, and this gets a little technical, but the Baird is actually a syndicate bid. So there's, usually in the past, we have like the Country Club Bank also bid on this, or a D.A. Davidson. They're now forming a syndicate, so they're essentially all participating as Robert Baird. So you might have seen five banks bid on this in the past, four of them have decided, hey,
Concentrate.
we're going to bid on this together to get a better bid overall. So we're seeing that in our industry as well, so that's another reason for that result. So great question on that. So really, tonight in front of you is a resolution that allows you to essentially accept this bid. It's really just a formal action you have in front of you on your agenda, essentially the note resolution. That then will allow us to lock in this rate from Baird and then proceed with the closing on November fourteenth. So that is essentially when we will be receiving all the funds for these projects. In terms of plan of finance, just kind of as a reminder, part of the reason why we're moving forward with the temporary note financing is flexibility is a big part of this. Essentially, the plan of finance on this is, as you consider this project, projects next year that potentially early as spring or summer of next year that you may move forward with. You don't necessarily have all your final costs for these projects figured out at this time. What the temporary note allows you to do is if costs come in lower than what you're expecting, you then can apply the cash that you still have left over towards a permanent financing at the end. So you're not paying, you have the flexibility to do that and combine it with a longer-term permanent financing. Well, basically, were to just move forward with the bond issue today, then you're essentially stuck with what that structure is, number one, but also what the funded amount is. So if you have additional cash in the year, you actually probably will have to wait five to seven years to be able to actually apply that to reducing the principal amount of financing. And with interest rates where they're at, five, five and a half percent on some permanent financing of these costs, we just weigh the pros and cons of, you understand there's double issuance cost as a result, but really that is a one-time fee that essentially happens, and it's usually in the one to two percent range compared to having to be outstanding with a particular bond issue at five plus percent.
I think that's one of the questions we had up here was, you know, do we actually, we don't know if we need all of that money. We don't know if we need the five million dollars. So being able to pay that back or, you know, pay it back on the premium would be great, if we don't need it.
Yep, exactly right.
Thank you.
So that's pretty much all I had from the financing perspective. There's a lot of information.
The question that I was asking a little bit earlier was, my understanding is the vote that we had already taken was to sell the bonds. If there's, is this more of a formality, or is it really, like, is there any variable in the mail at this point?
No, yeah, I see, exactly right. So essentially, you set up parameters as part of that meeting to where we know the final project cost. We now have a final interest rate. We have secured everything. We have confirmed that with the winning bank. All you're doing at this point is just moving forward and improving. So you're exactly right, just the formality of that. By the city that allows you, it's a, Tyler will talk about it a little bit, but it's essentially a note resolution. So the meeting earlier this month allowed you to proceed with this sale. Now you're essentially proceeding with locking in final interest rate, final amounts, purchaser information, the Baird information, and moving forward with the closing, getting a attorney general to sign off on all that.
He was, I believe, saying that if we were to change the email to anything like that, it would have to go all the way back. It would, and then we wouldn't be in our timeline for the ninety-eight street projects. There would be other ramifications to that. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that completely.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I'll introduce Tyler Ellsworth, bond counsel. And just as an addition to what Clayton was saying, is that the flexibility, as we said, also includes, when we talk about our permanent conversion, right, we're going to go to permanent bonds, that will include our phase two of ninety-eight street. If we did it in small increments, getting these, we pay those fees every time. Now what we're trying to do is control those fees that we talked about. So there will be, we'll incur those costs, of course, but not three and four times. We're just going to try to do it twice. And that will include, and we'll know towards that timeframe, what the ninety-eight street phase two match will be for us. We just simply don't know that. We do know that we were awarded STP funds for that project. We've just got to wait on closer, within two to three years. So that's what the flexibility really provides us, to include those other two road projects, which we hadn't, we hadn't made a formal decision as to what level that we're going to build them, though there's been some suggestions.
So good evening, good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have much to add to what Clayton and Mark have already provided. I think Clayton did a great job of providing the background on the process of going and integrating with SPP and how that shook out, the process of accepting bids for the notes that we took with bids at eleven o'clock this morning. It's right, it'll really be action before you consider it now, help you develop, offer any other. Visit our website, see our results, element in top of a proven record of success.
The human souls is the first instrument. The voice is the second tool. Music is the candle that light the darkness of the soul.
Sometimes the best part of the trip would never actually bother the plan. To a lucky five, only at the time you couldn't temper it, but to find you had to be open. The experiences that come from out of nowhere, out of the wrong mind, or climbing the stone streets and flipping clocks and getting shots that used to surround you, out of the earth, or the troll you might have been getting hit by. Out of the restaurant. You need dishes of horse.
Exactly lower rate than the rate that he had estimated, I will put their numbers together, closer to five and a quarter, five and a half. And so we actually beat their projection. And we ended up with a wall, but I think that was, you can look at that change in the rate. Still ended up, I think, pretty difficult to chat.
What's the total cost of the fees and the interest is right here, you know, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand? Are your fees included in all of that, too?
Our fees are included, yeah.
Okay.
These are all wrapped in, and I think of a vertical cost of the financing cost of issuance. Yeah. Yeah. Can you reference that number that you're looking at?
Uh, just the Robert Baird.
Oh, the total interest.
Yeah, the eight, eight eighty-three one.
Yeah, so that's going to be the total interest cost paid throughout the life of the temporary note if you were to technically go to permanent financing, or if you were to wait till the last possible moment, which is that maturity date of June first of seven. Our fee is a, well, essentially, so just thinking of total overall cost of issuance, it ends up being right around a little less than two percent of the par amount. So the par amount was five million seventy-five thousand. That's the heading of the page that you're looking at.
Yeah.
So total cost, which again, including just financial advisor fee, bond counsel, rating fee, there's some publication expenses, Kansas is a paying agent, we have attorney general treasurer, Kansas state treasurer. So there's just all encompassing standard costs that you're going to receive on every single public sale that you move forward with. It came in right around ninety-two thousand dollars.
Right.
To ninety-two thousand, like, the closing fees?
Correct. So that's all paid out of financing. So that's a great point. We fund that cost of issuance, fund that closing, so that it's really paid out of the temporary note financing. There's no operating costs that are used to make those payments.
So it's rolled in, basically?
Yep.
And then they said the, I forget which one said, that the issuing a second time when we go to permanent financing would between one and two percent. So if we're looking at this similar cost of around five million, that would be between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars. Can you just walk us through, sorry to ask a lot of questions kind of after the fact, but the cost savings between doing it once, kind of walk us through how we're saving money by having two closings, when it's, you know, between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, and I think it has more to do with the flexibility of the overall long-term plan. Because if you were to essentially lock in your bond structure at this point, if you had, let's just say on that project, you had five hundred thousand or three hundred thousand of the five million that you're issuing, leftover that you didn't end up using. You take that, that amount times five percent, well, you can't redeem that like you can in a temporary note immediately. So you're having to wait five to six to seven years to redeem a five hundred thousand dollar amount that's now you're paying five percent as a result of interest rate on year after year. That's going to add up pretty quickly to actually be a higher borrowing cost than the initial cost of issuance of one to two percent. So it's more of a timing and a flexibility matter. I mean, very dependent on, you know, what's the benefit? Will depend on what's the timing of when the project's complete, if you have any leftover funds. So there's not like a apples to apples just calculation. I can give you, but I think just given where, where interest rates are right now, five percent or five percent plus range, not having that flexibility to pay back your excess funds if they're not used over having to pay that five percent year after year for five, say, seven years before you can actually redeem it is a much larger cost for the city than the one or two percent upfront fee that we're only going to be charged for.
Clayton, this seems like a great, you know, option for us and a good option that we've chosen this route, so I appreciate that. But is this, is this common practice for other cities our size and, you know, doing projects like this?
Yeah, very common. Very common. It really comes down to, you don't know what that permanent financing cost is going to be, or what the project cost is going to be. Going through a financing, we recommend going through a temporary note financing first because of the things that I just talked about. If you have additional funds left over, not being able to
Yeah.
to pay those back and continuing to have to pay that interest rate for several years.
Right.
It's just a lot harder than anything, really simple calculations, and that's a lot harder here.
Is this similar, Mark, to what we're going to have to do when we're looking at City Hall and those buildings, or is that something different?
I think we would approach that differently. Certainly, our team here, we would get together and make calculations and figure out what the best financing plan is. As you can see, before, we didn't do temporary notes. We maybe done one, maybe. It's because there is concern about paying for things twice.
Yeah.
But in this case, we need the flexibility. But there, we should have, to be able to go bond a project at, say, X million, say twenty million, whatever that is.
Yeah.
And set that because that's going to be long-term, immediately, a larger amount, that sort of thing. With this team, we would reassemble again, and we would talk about a financing plan that would probably include probably more permanent financing.
I got you.
In those projects, they say, hey, it's twenty million, but there's also thirty percent contingency as well. So you kind of want to fit that in, but in the sense you're, it's a lot more money.
Yeah.
There is, should be more known cost.
Mm-hmm.
The only thing that we've noticed in that is five years ago was a lot cheaper.
Yeah.
So there may be some inflation factors, but given in the next two, three years, those should have leveled out. We should know those a little better. So I think this team would assemble, and we would more than likely say the amount and everything else, we would probably look at some long-term financing that.
Perfect. I didn't mean to get us off subject. I was just curious, because this seems like a great option for what we're doing with the street repair. You know, we're being able to cover and repair a lot of streets, you know, with this funding, so, and then have the option like we're talking about. So it's, it's good to, good to see that. Thank you.
Tyler, could I have you just point out, there's twenty-six pages. So would you point out the meat and potatoes of this particular document that you want to draw their attention to?
Yeah, absolutely. So a lot of this is pretty standard. A lot of that has to give the details of how it's going to work, and I won't focus on that too much. We can look at pages here, Article two, which starts on page five, talks a little bit about the security of the notes, that those pay on long-term bonds for the city, from other states. Taxes if the parents aren't paid for a bond or anything else, but I'm not going to spend a lot of time on those. Just two. Article three, which starts on page nine, section three oh one, I'd draw your attention to that. There are perhaps what it is, stating that we can repay these notes without penalty, which is December first, twenty twenty-four. So a little over a year from now, if things change or if your costs come in a lot less than you're anticipating, beginning to repay with no penalty, using the funds that you got on hand, so you're not locked in the borrowing for five million dollars for ten to twelve years.
That's nice.
That's probably the most critical piece. I mean, a lot of these other pieces here are kind of housekeeping. Either on page eleven, Article four, talks about the one. I think that's kind of also on page eleven. Article five, talks a bit about how the notes proceeds are dispersed from the funds that are there. I would note on, on page eleven, section five oh two, references a source of other monies. You do have funds on hand in Fund seven thirty-one, which is your ninety-eight street fund, the treasury of the city. And that was one of the things that we looked at as we put this plan together, doing the borrowing amount, or you have funds sitting here that haven't been counted, so we're going to try and work it on some fifty thousand dollars to reduce the size of the borrowing. So worth pointing that out. I don't think there's much to note in Article six or seven, eight, or even nine. Only other item that I would draw your attention to is really Exhibit A, which is on page one two, twenty twenty. Just outlines kind of the form of the note. And actually with me this evening, while we're meeting, I've got closing documents for the mayor, the city clerk, and the market sign. The front of the note, that's part of the closing document. So that's more to set out here in this exhibit for the resolution. And on the final page, page twenty-six, we got some detail. We got the purchaser identified, that Robert had bigger complaints. They was one of the two biggest today, that's their business, that purchase price for the notes, spell out in the interest rate. So happy to answer any additional questions. Mark, did you have anything else?
No, the hundred and forty-eight thousand is all the money that's left in our ninety-eight pre-construction street fund. So that's a Fund seven thirty-one, which was a bonded fund, bond proceeds. May have been some money moved around back when we moved from certain funds, and we kind of redistributed things. That, all of that pre-construction, say that the engineering, the financing, that's all done, and our final bill came in. We reduced the amount to a hundred and forty-eight thousand. So what happens next is we have to just manage the potential for arbitrage, right? We're going to make more in interest than we should, those kinds of things. So we thought at best, clear that account out, because it can't be applied to not phase two. So we said, just pay this back. We thought that was the best approach.
When the funds come in, we deposit those in whatever bank we're going to use. Is it legal to collect interest on them funds while they're sitting there idle?
That's arbitrage. Go ahead.
Yeah, it is. It is, but you have to be careful with that. And one other thing that I'll be visiting the staff about between now and will be exactly kind of the systems and policies that you want to have in place. And you do have existing policies on this. It's really a matter of dusting it off and making sure that staff is aware that they're there. So the short answer is, yes, you can earn interest. Generally, you want to make sure that the interest that you earn, while you borrow it from to part of the bank, that that interest rate is less than your five percent borrowing rate.
Okay.
Because these are being issued as federally taxed exempt, which means that the purchaser, bear than any investors that they sell to, doesn't pay federal income tax, and they get this interest.
Right, so they're tax-free.
Yeah, so that's why there's that.
Okay.
And remember, right away, we're spending one point five billion, and then we, it's at our time that we can go, for example, Kansas Avenue will be, it's a local project, so then we could expend the funds there right away with the survey and all the other things.
I think we should look into that anyway, you know. So it's going to be there for a year or two, maybe?
Probably twenty-four months.
Yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, so we will keep an eye on exactly what the interest rate, because we're in such a high interest rate department.
Right.
It might be that we can place the funds in an account that will earn more than that five percent of the payment. Sometimes you can earn it, sometimes you can't. But we'll work with the staff and maybe come to a proper.
Thank you. And thank you for the interest rate, too. It came in a lot lower than I thought it did, so, yeah.
We were surprised, pleasantly surprised, yes.
Since councilmen's got brought up the building project earlier, and I won't belabor that too much, but since Bond Council's here, I thought, well, instead of bringing you back out, it's a good time to ask. One thing that we've talked about recently is our debt capacity and how the debt capacity opened up space for this to come in. But when we visited you previously about the building projects, I believe the number given to us was about twenty to twenty-three million dollars in its entirety for building projects, street projects, everything over a ten-year or so span before we have to increase our debt service mill to cover those payments. So I would imagine that this would be five million dollars off of that twenty to twenty-three million that we should be considering as we're entering projects in the future.
Good, that's right. Yeah, that's very safe, yeah. Yeah, exactly. We're going from about seven point five million, right, adding this five million here. Then, so that's, so that capacity, when we're talking about twenty-three million-ish, that's when you have to really start thinking about your mill rate. We have ten point four one right now signed to it, and I think there was a proposal from staff within the last couple of years of maybe looking at three quarters of a mil more assigned to that, so we start building up more capacity. That's still on the table for years, future years, so, but again, we would have to, once you reach that twenty-three million, that's when we're going to have to start thinking about the mill rate assigned simply to debt.
And how does this affect, like, as we're looking at taking on so much more debt, how does that affect? I can work in the real estate world, so I'm debt-to-income ratios. I know city municipal finance is more debt-to-asset ratio. How is this affecting our debt-to-asset, and does that affect our future interest rates in our city rating?
Clayton, do you want to fill that just with respect to fund balances and cash flows, how that shook out? Yeah, yeah, and part of that analysis, when we looked into the, just kind of your future debt capacity, as Mark alluded to, assumed those factors, so assumed that essentially you're keeping your mill levy the same at the level that it's at now for the next fifteen to twenty years for the debt service fund. So essentially, what that does is it builds capacity and improves your cash balances in that fund. As a result, we kind of go back to that credit rating agency discussion, right, that's really what this comes down to. As you can kind of see, I think, from the result of this sale, banks don't just take the credit report word for word on the interest rate they're going to provide, they're going to do their own background check and credit investigation, yes, into your actual city and your finances. They're gonna do their own background check and, and credit investigation, yes, into your actual city and your finances. Yeah, I mean, a, a future debt issuance, if you're just gonna go try to maximize the amount that you can against what you have available in your debt capacity, it's gonna have an effect on your, on your credit rating. I think it's more of what is the plan of finance behind that is your, are you, because you talked about your income to debt as from a personal level, it's really assessed valuation to debt from a credit rating perspective. So is it's debt that you're issuing, improving that metric, is it going to improve your longer-term assessed valuation? If so, then that, that metric of what your capacity is just grows higher and higher. So I think it becomes, comes down to the decision of, is that that you're taking on, is it an investment that's going to build the tax base of the year? And if so, that's looked at as a model of life.
And would streets be considered something that improves the tax base?
Well, I mean, it, it depends. I mean, it, it comes down to, do businesses want to come to your city because of your seat, because of your streets, your residences want to come to your city because of that? I mean, it's, it, you gotta be looking at your, a, a bigger picture of, I think it's important to have good infrastructure to start with for inviting anyone into your community, right? So if that's the starting block of that, I think it's a good, good point to make as a reasonable death. Is it something that if you don't invest in, are people going to leave or do you, or business is maybe? But it's, it's kind of one of his, an investment decision, right?
Well, I'm, I'm just asking regarding the bond status and the debts app, the debt to asset ratio. If, when they're looking at our rating, our interest rates, our future debt potentially, and what we're gonna be rated at, do they look at streets? Because this five million's for streets, do they look at this five million and say that's to improve your assets?
I don't know if they look at it from a long-term, like forecasting perspective, but they look at your current moment in time of what is your debt to asset ratio or debt to assessed valuation ratio? And then does, they're not gonna make an assessment of whether that project is going to potentially improve it in the future in a snapshot of time. They do look at though, if you look at the city's outstanding debt, it's pretty aggressively paid off, right? I mean, if you look at over the next ten years, I believe it's over fifty to sixty percent of your debt will be paid off. So they look at metrics like that when they're forecasting of, okay, you have it, even though you have potentially in the future a higher debt policy, you may have a more aggressive, which they view as good, as a positive thing. So there's, there's those little things that they forecast, but most of the stuff they look at is this moment in time. I think it's more of the city, they view these projects as investments to improve that in ten years or fifteen years from now. So that when we come back in ten or fifteen years, if you've issued all this debt, well, has your assessed valuation gone up as well?
Okay, so the proof's in the pudding really, in, in that fact. Like if our assessments have gone up when we go to issue the debt, that's when they'll be able to look at the assessment. They don't look at what we're issuing the debt for now.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm good. Think we're good.
Will I make the motion to adopt the resolution two zero two three dash one five, authorizing the issuance of delivery of five million seventy-five thousand principal amount, general obligation temporary notes, series two zero two three?
One second.
With a motion from Councilman Bishop, a second from Councilman Scott, will the clerk please call room?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oh.
So I think that will conclude our special meeting unless we have anything else we need to discuss. All right, thank you.
I was waiting for two more guesses.
Tell me we did the right thing.